...nation, individual liberty and justice for all. The secretary do the roll call please.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel, Mr. Benz, Dr. Feig, Mrs. Kaufman, Mrs. Love, Mr. Polakowski, Mrs. Rhodes, Mr. Miller.
Here and there are six present and three absent. Ms. Kaufman was going to be here, she called from the airport today because of the storm and she is not able to be here and really felt feels bad about it to all of us because we had changed the meeting partly of trying to accommodate that schedule. But understandable and I know Ms. Love is on vacation so. Okay, let us move and just a note here, our superintendent is away tonight and so filling in very ably will be our assistant superintendent, Dr. Scott and I will turn to you if there are any citizen's comments.
I'll give up, I protect you Mr. Miller also I don't know if you mentioned Mr. Alt did call admin today and said that he had another out of town engagement and there are no citizen comment cards this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, now this is our discussion sessions and we will move then if you want to, Dr. Scott, just move there on and note anything the minutes of June 27.
Okay, well first at the June 27 meeting you will be asked to approve the minutes of the May 2nd and the May 23rd 2013 meetings.
All right, we'll do that and then we'll move to finance.
The accounts payable and treasurer's report which are not yet available will be voted on on the June 27th 2013 meeting.
I have an item under finance, at what point can we discuss the budget?
Let me see, do we have that at another place?
I don't see.
You wanted to make a comment on the budget, Ms. Feig, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I.
Oh, okay, we would have, we have a topic there adopt final budget.
That's right.
Is that, we'll look for your comment at that point, okay, thank you. We will move then to discussion here, old business.
Policy 252 and 253 are under review and the revision of the first draft is included in your packets. At the May 23 meeting, the board posted those policies, 252 and 253. As the policy manual was being reviewed, it was discovered that neither of those policies existed. Policy 252 deals with relationships between adults and students, 253 deals with employees dating students and Mr. Petonic has gone through a first revision to those policies and has suggested additional revisions. One additional revision includes the definition of dating, which was not originally in policy 253. You'll be asked to adopt those policies at the July meeting and those are, the copies of those first round revisions are in your, included in your packet for discussion.
Good to have those two comments on the two relationships between adults and students or the one on dating. Just say this on the one on relationships between adults and students, just a general comment, seems to me in our, in our society, we're constantly trying to find our way in keeping open free communication and at the same time taking whatever our judicious kind of precautions. But it, but it seems to me these professions like teaching and I would include in that whether it's in medical practice, counseling, all work on a fairly high level of trust that there is this kind of client and the person in this case student teacher or if it's patient, doctor, whatever. So what are the, what is the appropriate balance of kind of open trusting relationships and at the same time taking appropriate precautions and I, so my, my initial reaction is, is whenever something inhibits teachers talking with their students, and the most obvious one here is the question or texting or telephone calls or that, what is the level of, and I realize that we come to this in different approaches, but I just, and at what point is texting kind of the equivalent of conversation in another, you know, or a, or a kind of meeting each other in the, on the driveway or in the hallway or in the sidewalk or, so I'm only saying, without being too, but I recall our own kids when they were, teachers would send them notes during the summer or informal. That was good for our kids, that, that, your teacher, teachers had that kind of contact. In other words, I also am aware that there can be abuse of that and we see it in the hill, there are terrible things that have happened, so what the line is of trust and that, but I do feel this way and I, again, coming on this idea of giving quite a bit of freedom here, we're a rural community and a rural community works on a fairly high level of trust, which is different from some gated community, at least in my interpretation, or a high, a high prime community, for example, where you can take all kinds of precautions. So I, but that's just a few comments here, general comments, I don't know if that triggers All right. Go ahead, let's go to graduation requirements.
In looking at policy 217 graduation requirements, we noticed some issues that deal with, really three things, you know, one in this district, we have the mission of high quality learning for all and there are a couple areas in the policy that maybe unintentionally were barriers to kids reaching the highest levels of learning and we wanted to address that and also dealing with our, our staff reduction, that impacts the graduation requirement policy a little bit and also just our curriculum issues, transitioning to P A Common Core in Keystone's also affects the present policy, the way it's written, so we'd like to discuss that. Mr. Kropchak is going to step to the podium and highlight the major changes and then allow you folks to ask questions about any part of it.
Good evening. Page two of 11 is a good starting point here on this policy. This identifies the number of credits and types of credits that would be required to graduate from Southmoreland High School and one of the, the large changes that we're seeking in this policy is the science and math credits, which have historically been three in science and three in math, we're looking to increase that into four in science and four in math. So in each common area or common, pardon me, each core area would require four credits apiece, science, social studies, math and language arts. Reflecting the change in common core will be the removal of the P S S A requirements and credits allotted for participation on that, on those exams. With that, we would also remove that entire subsection regarding the P S S A. As you know, this school year, the, the high schools across the Commonwealth are now participating in the Keystone, Algebra I, Biology and Literature exams, which have replaced our requirement to participate in the P S S A writing, science, reading and math exams. Continuing through, we did some, some changes through the different alternative means of acquiring credit in our school district. On page four of 11, one requirement alternative for our students to gain credit will be online learning provided by the Southmoreland School District. We currently employ the SOLO program as we call it, Southline Online, Southmoreland Online Learning Academy, students will have the, or have had the opportunity to get course credit through that. Additionally, independent study, pages five and six of 11. In reviewing that policy, we, we felt that in order really to uphold our mission to high quality learning for all, actually five, six and seven of that policy. On page seven, we eliminated the qualifications for our students to gain access to independent study. In years past, the board directed only students admitted who have demonstrated academic proficiency, majority, maturity of judgment, strong motivation to learn, self-reliance, we're still seeking those qualifications, but we want to open it up to the opportunities for all our students to have the opportunity to participate in an independent study, not limited to a small number of students through that. We look to address lastly as well, our students, the opportunity for concurrent as well as early admission to college and we cleaned up some language within that that would again address our mission and allow for kids the greatest opportunities possible to receive the highest educational experience in our high school.
And Mr. Kropchak, the main difference concurrent colleges, students attending high school full time.
Yes.
And then attending classes in the evening or on Saturdays, weekends.
Yes.
Where early admission is, they're replacing some, at least some of their high school with college coursework.
Correct. Those are the salient points that are addressed in this, in this policy here.
I have several questions, Dan, can I ask them?
Yeah.
On page two, where you changed three to four credits, it says it's required in grades nine, 10 and 11.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that the four credits have to be completed in grades nine, 10 and 11?
Well, actually, we were discussing this today and we seek to strike that, this was based out of a time when we, we wanted the credits to be completed prior to the administration of the P S S A in grade 11. I don't know necessarily that, that we're looking that the four credits.
When we reviewed that this afternoon, we ran across that and that should have had the red stripe through.
Oh, oh, okay, that makes more sense because I couldn't, I couldn't figure that out. On both?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, that doesn't mean that we may have students that might acquire their four credits prior to their senior year.
Yeah, but here it says required and that's right.
Exactly, and like we ran across it today.
So that gets struck, okay. We're in here and of course I'm, I'm going to plead ignorance because I read it and probably missed it, where does it say that the Keystone exam is required?
I don't know that it necessarily indicates that specifically.
Okay, the reason I ask because it did say that P S S A was required, that was struck and I just wondered, you struck the one, but you didn't put the other one in. So if a kid came to school here and didn't want to take the Keystone, is that okay?
There are two things, one, the Keystone exam carries a state requirement, whereas the P S S A was not tied specifically to graduation. So the requirements from the Commonwealth require that all kids in next year's class of 2017 complete and with proficiency the exams in Algebra, Biology and Literature. Secondly, there are, as there is also with the P S S A, there are processes that exist for students to, to seek exemptions.
So you're not going to put that in there then?
Yeah, Mr. Kropchak, I think under, under the former P S S A districts had a opportunity to provide credit.
Yes.
Within their individual district, which, which we did and that's reflected, student participation on the 11th grade P S S A will count as one required credit and we, as we discussed it administratively, we did not want to assign credit for graduation for the Keystone, now that the state requires that students pass that.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that is on the first page under authority, you don't say that the State Board of Education is part of the authority, I don't think, and maybe it's in there and I don't know it. It says that they have to, it says here satisfactory results of district and or state assessments. You can take those tests and not do satisfactorily and that doesn't affect your ability to graduate, right?
On the P S S A?
No, I mean on anything here, well, it would be the Keystone, right?
The Keystone, it would affect your graduation. The class of 2017, they have to pass those three exams.
They can't do a project?
That is after several administrations.
Right. But it says here you have to have satisfactory results with the district and state assessments. So I guess you would interpret district then as a project maybe, huh, Dan?
The project would fulfill the.
That's still state, huh?
Maybe just for clarity, that, that might be a change or an inclusion that we need to have, disclaimer that in addition to these graduation requirements, the Keystone is required by the Commonwealth.
Right, perhaps.
And all the, and all of these other things, so that, maybe just for clarity.
Under authority, couldn't you put the Commonwealth Board of Education regulations? That would encompass everything, wouldn't it?
Yeah, certainly, maybe Mr. Petonic could give us some guidance on how to.
The only authority now is district.
On how and where to put that in there, but it probably would make things more clear to have that in there.
That's why I was asking if you're not going to put in here somewhere that they have to at least, they, if you had that, then they would have to take the Keystone. But right now, if you don't have that written in, they might not have to.
Perhaps.
I don't know.
Language that addresses the Commonwealth obligation or the students obligation by the Commonwealth.
Okay, that's just a thought that I had. The other one on page four, you said that they have to, in order to get these alternatives, they have to have online learning provided by Southmoreland.
Yes.
So would that mean that an IU course would not be accepted?
That, that is our accepted or our provided, the consortium is, is what we specifically belong to, I think what it's probably distinguishing itself from is perhaps an outside charter cyber institution.
Couldn't that say online learning approved by the Southmoreland School District? It says provided, I thought perhaps it was a matter of approval. I don't, I don't know, I don't care. Then the other thing is you said that any kid at any level can take independent study, right? No matter how they're doing. But if you look for early admission, it says number two, that you have to be in the top 10% of your class in order to do that one. What if you're number 11 and you want to take a college course? I just think there's a conflict there, that you can allow any student to do independent study, but only certain kids and then when, when do you calculate this top 10%? Do you do it in their, at what year, their junior?
That begins in ninth grade and then is tracked on an annual basis.
And if that changes, Dan, then they may be allowed one year and not allowed another year?
Well, early admission is a full scale and it has happened in my tenure several times, early on in my tenure, at Southmoreland, on as the principal specifically, students would forego their entire senior year and their, essentially their freshman year of college would replace their senior year of high school. It has been a rare practice in 13 years, but it has been something that's happened. I think that is differently than concurrent where we have students annually that may take a course or two at community, Penn State Fayette and they get the credit from that institution, it doesn't necessarily replace their credits as the high school classes. So we, we thought the, you know, it's a pretty large decision for a student and family to partake in wanting to, to take that option and we wanted to assure that, you know, there were some things looked at.
I understand that, but my question is about the student must be in the top 10% of their class in order to qualify for early admission, but on the other hand, any child can take independent study at any level and it seems to me that's a problem.
Yeah, and we, we actually discussed that, Dr. Feig, administratively and still the, for the independent study, you still have to be recommended embedded by your instructional department, the team for, for the course that you want to take. So there's still, so by eliminating what we eliminated there, we're trying to take out the traditional belief that it's only open to the elite students in that section. Now, the concurrent college also allows students that, that are not our so-called exceptional students, they, they still go to high school, but they can still have a college experience if they choose after school is over on weekends, but the early admission to college is established specifically for the exceptionally able student. So if you're going, if we're going to say that this is, this is a provision for those who are exceptionally able, then we have to be able to say who is exceptionally.
You are criteria.
And that, that was the criteria.
And when do you say this 10% is determined?
At the end of each year.
End of each school year, yes.
In each grade level.
And if it changes, does that disqualify a student?
It does not change until the end of the next school year, so if like you start out your senior year as number one, for example, that will not change until the end of that school year.
But if, if a ninth grader or a 10th grader was in the top 10% and then they hit their, their junior year and they were 12%, that means they can't continue, is that right?
I guess that, that is a good question. 10% on an annual basis cumulatively, is it, is it at the time of entrance into the institution? That, that is a good question. You could be number one in 10th grade.
You know, Dan, they're fighting over who's the valedictorian, you know what I'm talking about.
Right.
I just, I'm just looking at this scene where there could be a problem.
Right.
It's not hard to go from 10% to 11%.
Right, you could be number 10 in ninth grade and number 11 in 11th grade, does that exclude you from that opportunity? Yeah, that's.
Thank you, is there anything else that somebody wants to, to raise?
Tim, it says in this book here that the Common Core standards and the chapter four regulations are connected because the standards are part of the regulations. The key connecting piece is the issuance of testing and changes to high school graduation requirements, which are also under chapter four. Do all of these requirements, this document, does it fulfill everything that's in there in chapter four?
We believe so.
Yes.
Other comments or just a question or 25 credits are required for graduation?
Yes.
What would be the typical senior in the class just graduated, what would be typically, what would, what might they have in number of credits?
Successfully, 30 to 32.
Okay, so they still have room for quite a few electives within that.
Yes, and seven are already built as electives, so 18 required cores and seven credits worth of electives and plus any additional. I, I did also, and I, I would go back, something I did not mention, a subtle hint to be brief by Dr. Scott's introduction, as you know, occasionally not very brief. The, in the requirements for electives, we have through time also due to staff reduction, no longer have a reading specialist instructor at the high school, so the half credit in the reading has been struck as well as the half credit life management slash nutrition course also has been struck as a requirement. Those courses are, the life management coursework is available as an elective credit and not as a required credit.
Okay, thank you very much and we'll.
You're welcome.
And as you look at this, this is what 60 days, so we'll have time if somebody has further comments, so I want to keep you reading. Good, adopt final budget.
You'll be asked to adopt the final budget at the June 27th 2013 meeting. The proposed final budget has been posted in accordance with the board vote on May 23rd. The proposed final budget reflects revenues of $25,424,558, a transfer from the committed fund balance to cover early retirement incentive plans of $168,000, a transfer from the unassigned fund balance to cover early retirements of $136,500, a transfer from the unassigned fund balance of $249,284 to cover the budget deficit and a budgetary reserve of $400,000 for a total budget, revenue and expenditures of $26,378,342. This represents a decrease of $59,678 from last year's proposed final budget.
I know you might have a comment here, Ms. Feig, Mr. Marnell, did you have anything further to say on budget or?
I do not.
Okay. Go ahead.
I had a question for Mr. Marnell and then I have a, a comment. The budget as it has been proposed has a $953,000 deficit. Where does that money come from, Joe?
You have between your budgeted expenditures and your incoming revenues, you have various transfers that are coming from your fund balance, so that would account for the differential between budgeted expenditures and budgeted revenues.
Okay, that's.
Four hundred thousand of that is part of your budgetary reserve that's being assigned within your expenditure budget. So, I would caution subtract that from the nine-hundred thousand.
Is that in addition to the seven-hundred-and-four-thousand that's being transferred from the fund balance?
In addition to what?
Well, you have transfer from the fund balance, seven-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, right?
You have one hundred and sixty-eight for early retirement incentives from the committed, one hundred and thirty-six thousand from the unassigned. You have two hundred and forty-nine thousand to cover potential deficit, and an additional four hundred thousand set aside.
It's under, under revenue. Am I wrong? It's under revenue, seven-hundred-and-four-thousand?
The fund balance is part of your total funds available for appropriation. So, you have your fund balance. Of course, you have your various categories, you know, committed, assigned, reserved, et cetera. And then, of course, you have your incoming revenues, local, state, federal dollars, makes up your total funds available for your appropriations. Of course, your appropriation bill is your expenditure budget.
Go ahead, Ms. Fike. I think you have a comment.
I realize that, as I've sat here over the period of time, that we've asked the same question over and over and over, what is our fund balance? And that's always been very, it's always been a difficult answer to get. And I realize now that we've been asking the wrong question. My question is, what is the unassigned fund balance? And that is the money that has not already been spent, committed, or assigned to be spent, which is what is left. Would you pass this? Would you give one of these, the newspaper? When you, we've been talking about, thank you very much. When we were talking about fund balance, there are three parts to it. The part that's committed, the parts that are signed, which means it's earmarked to pay for things, and then the unassigned fund balance. And I realize now that the numbers that we've been seeing all along is the total of those three. And I have been, I guess, the question that has never been answered for me is, what was the unassigned fund balance, which is the money that's available? It's like having five hundred dollars in a savings account, and you show me your book, and it says you have five hundred dollars, but you've already gotten bills for four hundred. So, you can say your account is worth five hundred dollars, but in fact, it's one hundred, and that's the assigned fund balance. So, what I did is I went to the Department of Education, and what they have been doing for years and years, and it's all up there, it's all public, it's all out there, is that they have received forms from Southmoreland all the years, and they list all those numbers, and you can go back really far, you can go back really far. And if you look back at some of the earlier language, you'll see words such as unreserved, designated, unreserved, undesignedated, which is the same as our assigned, and so forth. But the only, the only analysis I was interested in was the unassigned fund balance, which is how much money we really have left. So, everything I have down here is from the financial statistics directly from the Department of Education, which would have been given to them by us. And I noticed that prior to two thousand six, two thousand seven, you'll see a string of zeros. There was no unreserved, designated category. It was zeros the whole way down. Then in two thousand four, correlating with the tax increase, it jumped from zero to three million two hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven, with another two million dollars in the unassigned, and the fund balance jumped in one year from one million seven hundred and seventy to five million two hundred and seventy-some. And then, along with that, it continued to collect the tax increases, so that by two thousand ten, the fund balance was seven million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. But it says that the unassigned, the available fund balance was one million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five seventy-eight. That was the number written in there as the unassigned fund balance. I didn't bother putting down all those numbers, because there's a lot of them, but from nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand six, which was a period of ten years, the unassigned fund balance averaged two million six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, two hundred and ten, a year. Then when you look through, from two thousand seven to two thousand ten, it dropped, it dropped five hundred thousand dollars. And then in two thousand eleven, the actual available fund balance, unassigned money, was one million eight hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. I don't have the final number for two thousand twelve, because that's done by October of two thousand thirteen, and you can ignore that line, but the difference between two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen is one point two million dollars, and that accounts for the number of our unassigned fund balance being six hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. So, from what I have been able to get from these charts from the Department of Education, our unassigned available money has been decreasing by about six hundred thousand dollars a year. And the real question I have is, is there some way that we can put money back into that fund balance and build it back up again? Because I think we have an obligation to do that. Is there, is there a way that we can put money back into the unassigned fund balance? Because in one more year than after this budget, at the rate it's going, the fund balance will be zero. It will be a zero. The unassigned fund balance will be a zero. The other categories are there, but they're spent. They're assigned, they're committed, they're, they're spent. And I know you'll say, well, maybe they won't be, but they're in there, so I have to assume there's a reason for putting them in. But after one more budget after this one, at this rate, the fund balance of money available to us will be a zero. And I was wondering if there's a way that we can reverse this and put some money back in there.
Do you have any suggestions on this, Ms. Fike?
Well, there's only three ways to do it, Levi. Number one is if the skies open up and they dump a pile of money on us, okay? And there's supposed to be a little bit more coming from the state, there's, in the budget. The second way is to raise taxes enough that, and it would be huge to even try to do that, which doesn't seem to be, I don't think that's an option. This is a side comment, but it was in the paper where the National Envelope Company has notified four hundred employees that they may close if things don't get better. So, that puts four hundred people, some of whom live here, without jobs. And I don't know, Mr. Patonic, am I right that they pay real estate taxes, but if they close, that could affect the amount of real estate taxes we get?
The land is owned by a different entity than the operating company. I do not know, but I suspect that the leaseholder somehow passes on the obligation to pay, or tries to collect it from the operating company. If they don't collect it, the taxes are still good. But of course, it gets into a bankruptcy scenario, and they become more difficult.
I mean, I was worried about that, because that affects the school district. My first concern, of course, is for those four hundred people who may not have a job, but the property taxes affects the school district. But the third way, and the only way left, is cuts, and that's the only way that you can balance a budget and get more money. And right now, it appears that the budget that has been passed for this coming year cannot put money back in the fund balance. In fact, it takes millions out of it. And I guess this, this was the information that I had hoped that I would be receiving, and I never got until I finally sat down and figured out how to get it. It's that unassigned fund balance. That's the available money. The assigned, committed, that money's earmarked, it's there. And I won't do it now, but I would like to make a motion, and I will make a motion during the voting meeting. We had four teachers who retired, and we owe them two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in retirement bonus money, incentive money. And this goes way out until the year two thousand eighteen, I think, or nineteen. I don't know how they pay it. But it would seem to me that we've made a promise to these teachers, you know, and I know the teachers don't like me, but I still want to do what's right. And I think we should commit that money like we did for the other teachers, so that they would be sure to get that money over that six-year period. And I'll make the motion. It doesn't matter if it passes, fine. If not, I just, I really feel that we have an obligation to them, since the board did vote to do that. But this is my concern, Levi, the unassigned fund balance. And like I said, I got these numbers from the Department of Education.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other comments on the budget? Let us move to the CMLB CTC renovation plan.
Six board members, Mr. Patonic, Mr. Marnell, myself, Dr. Molnar, attended an informational gathering at Central Westmoreland Career Technology Center on the evening of Thursday, May thirtieth. We learned about the latest proposed renovation plan and its potential cost to member districts. The PowerPoint that we saw that evening is included in your packet, and the final proposal, or the latest proposal from Johnson Controls, has the total cost of the project coming in at roughly six and a half million dollars. And the major provisions, as I recall, were the roof replacement, the upgraded HVAC, replacement of the boilers, exhaust upgrades to all of those areas that really needed the exhaust upgrades, and upgraded lighting were some of the major provisions that we saw from Johnson Control. We had been asked to, all the member districts have been asked to discuss and vote on this in their July meetings, because, just as a reminder for, in the June meetings, thank you, as a reminder for the public, all the member districts must approve this plan, and if that doesn't occur, then the renovation cannot go forward as proposed. So, it has to be unanimous among the member school boards. And if they are able to get approval in June from all the member schools, then they said, indicated that immediately in July, we're going to start with some of the most important parts of this that they can have in place when school starts for the kids in late August. So, and since so many of us were there, I want to stop talking and open it up for discussion, so others can highlight some of the main points that they heard.
Go ahead, Ms. Rose.
After we attend, I thought it was well done. It was good for us to be there and actually listen to the professionals give us the proposal. My opinion is, I think we should go ahead with this. This is something that's, in my opinion, way overdue, and I think that we owe it to the kids that go there, our kids and the kids in the district and the county, because I think that it's important that we give our students another option. Not every child is designed to go to college, and I think that that provides our kids with a good career opportunity, and I think we should go forward with it.
And I believe, thank you, and a very important point I neglected to mention, and that is, in addition to the tuition that we pay for the students that attend, in addition to that, our portion of this proposed project would be, for fifteen years, if they get the interest loan at two and a half percent, would be roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. And if the interest rate came in at three percent, it would be forty, almost thirty-nine, almost forty thousand for fifteen years. That would be our portion of that per year for fifteen years. And every school pays their rate based on their average daily membership of the students, total students that attend.
Will you please tell me where you got that figure, the thirty-nine thousand dollars?
You have two-sided, and the one, the one says, based on six million four ninety-two, six twenty-four project at three percent. So, under Southmoreland.
Okay, thirty-nine, okay.
It's in the, in the middle, yearly payment.
Well, then, what is the last column?
That's simply noting, that's simply noting the difference. We do, in effect, do almost, as I understand, it's kind of a banking function with the technology to extend money to them as sort of an accounting. But those figures, the real figure is about thirty-nine thousand a year that we're investing in.
It's fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-one. That thirty-nine thousand dollars, you add the twelve thousand to it, and that's what you get, the fifty-one five thirty-one.
No, the fifty-one five thirty-one is the yearly refund we receive.
Right.
Because they don't hold a fund balance at the year-end. They take extra money to be able to cover things as they need to cover in that year, but since they don't accumulate a fund balance, they refund each member school their portion, and each year, as this looks that, we receive about a fifty-one thousand dollar a year refund from the VOTEC. So, if you, if our additional cost was roughly forty thousand dollars a year, now we would only be getting a twelve thousand dollar refund. But I think that the salient number, we pay tuition for the kids that attend, and then in addition to that, we'd be paying either thirty-eight thousand or thirty-nine thousand dollars, depending on the interest rate on the loan, for fifteen years.
That's what I'll get into.
At the time they get the loan, yes.
So, does that, is my math right, we're going to pay six hundred thousand dollars? The debt we would take on for fifteen years would be six hundred thousand dollars, is that right?
That'd be thirty-nine thousand times fifteen.
Forty times fifteen is sixty, so we would be, we would be taking on a six hundred thousand dollar debt at three percent, and a little bit under that, like five hundred and fifty thousand, under the two and a half percent.
Which is, absolutely, and that's, you know, it's the cost of doing business, which is education. It's the same thing we take on to educate students in Southmore Primary Center. So, here we're just educating our kids at the vocational.
You know, that's not an issue, Tim. That's not an issue. We're not talking about that.
It sounded like it was.
No, I'm trying to figure out what they're asking this board to take on, a mortgage for fifteen years. And under one, it would be six hundred thousand dollars, and the other one would be about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, and again, I thought a very simple way that was either thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for fifteen years as an additional cost, or thirty-nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years as our share of that six and a half million dollar upgrade to the facility.
Over fifteen years, six hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's six hundred.
And I'll tell you what, I was very impressed with their presentation. I was impressed because a lot of our students from all districts are not college people. They have a chance to go up here and get an education, get a trade, where they can go out in the oil field today, the gas field, get a welding degree, and get a good job. And a lot, a lot of children aren't college material, but they do want to work with their hands, and this is what you teach them. I was very impressed with what went on up there that night, and I think it's a good project. We cannot let those, these kids go down the tube. And what I'm afraid of, somebody's going to get sick up there, and then everybody's going to be in trouble. Because the ventilation system and the welding system is shot, boiler system shot, roof shot. We've got to do something for these children that don't want to go to college and get a trade. I think that's our obligation. That's all I got.
Dr. Scott has the formal resolution to hand out to you that was not included as part of the board packet, and this is from the solicitor for the Central Westmoreland Tech. And it's the more formal resolution, and one sentence going to be out.
There you go. Did you get it?
No, you did.
That was very, Mr. Polantowski, you were there that evening?
Yeah, I thought the committee out there was very transparent. They left the email addresses self-understood. We had any questions afterward. That's all.
I thought, presentation as well, and as Fortune Gil has said, that all of our students that go there, not only are they getting an education they can use in the future, but they're earning awards and stuff. So, they're not just not creeping through and just barely getting by, but they're getting awards at the state level, some have gone to nationals over the years, and things like that. But the other thing that caught my attention was during the presentation, was when one of the people said that, I don't know if this is past year or last year, that the boilers almost exploded, and they would have to shut down the school a minimum of a month, possibly two months or more, if that would have happened. So, I mean, if one of our buildings needed all this work done, we're just not going to sit by and say no, let it deteriorate, fall apart, because we have money invested in the building, we have students invested in the building. the building, we have students invested in the building, we take care of it. Basically, we own a portion of this building, so it's pretty much the same thing.
I'm glad you mentioned the students, Mr. Bench, because we don't want to overlook that. And I think traditionally, Southmoreland students distinguish themselves very highly at the VOTEC, and just in the things that I get from the high school. And you're right about the national and state awards. In one shop, we had two students that achieved perfect attendance, and very few students have perfect attendance in any given school year. And they're some of the best representatives of our district.
Mr. Marnell, you were at the meeting, any further comments?
So if our refund goes down...
Just a minute, excuse me, I asked Mr. Marnell, was at the meeting.
It was an excellent presentation. And from my standpoint, you know, I would look at it from, would I want my son or my daughter to go to school in a building that needed that kind of work? And what would I think of my elected officials if they didn't take care of that facility where my son and daughter would be going to school? So, you know, I think you have a, an obligation to take care of that school building, because you have your, your children going there. I'm part of the same Career Technology Center, I live in Hemfield area, but I would want my child to be in a safe environment, with a solid roof, safe boilers, and especially if they're in the kind of classes with the automotive or the welding, I would certainly want them to have the ventilation that would not then expose them to, you know, hazardous fumes. So, we have, we have an obligation to take care of our facilities, and we're part, we're partners with the other districts in that facility.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Dr. Scott, do you know of any one of the other districts that have voted on this yet?
Good question, Mr. I talked to Mr. Geese today. Two districts have voted already in June, and they both have approved it. And obviously, since we're at this juncture, we're still waiting for the other districts to approve. And Mr. Geese said he would keep me informed.
Good, here's a question. Is this set up like the last time, with like Chevron had it, or we don't have to start making payments for a year after it is finished?
Yes.
Am I to understand that right?
Because we're already going to be in this budget year, so it would be the next. A good question also.
If our refund changes, does our payment go up?
No.
Or down?
You just get less refund.
So the payment could go up?
No, the payment is the same. They're taking it from the refund. If your refund went down, then there would be a shortfall. If your refund went up, then you would actually have an increase in the refund. It depends on what the refund is. The basic cost doesn't change. Your refund could go up or down, because of other things that are going on with the operation of the school.
That's what I meant, if the refund, the refund can change.
I think, Mr. Marnell, in lay terms, that is a line of credit. We serve as a bank for them, to put it in kind of lay terms. So we send them a line of credit, they return then what they don't use in that. So in terms of our costs, our costs are the thirty-nine, in round numbers. So ignore the rest of it, except as a, as a figure that we've used over the years as a line of credit to float them.
Such a budgetary reserve.
Yes, you use a different funding method here than what we had in the Eastern Westmoreland Career Technology Center. You're right, they're, they're going out and doing a giant borrowing tax dissipation loan to start their school year off. We're paying our tuition bill at the end of their fiscal year. So they're, obviously, they're borrowing more than to cover themselves, to cover their operations. There's always been, under this method, a refund. And of course, there's some variability in that refund, they're showing you an average. So, but the debt service payment would certainly stay the same within their budget.
It says in this resolution that it's an interest rate to be determined.
Yeah, two and a half to three.
Right now, that's set up on two and a half to three percent, right? If they can get, the way this is set up right now, it's a thirty-nine thousand dollars to our obligation. Am I right or wrong, that's what they were talking about up there that night?
Yes, and I think they're anticipating the financing to fall within that rate.
Yeah.
Two and a half to three. And then they just showed two, two scenarios. And I think they strongly expect it to fall within those two. Hopefully, it will fall in at two and a half.
So Jim, will we get a document saying then that we're going to make this payment?
What?
Will we get a document saying we're going to make this payment for 15 years then?
They will, issue a document.
Issue a document.
Once they finalize their financing.
They give one to each district?
Yes, yes.
We will vote on that within the next hour, or whenever we meet for the voting meeting later tonight. Cancellation of the July board meeting.
Traditionally, in July, we've held one board meeting rather than two, so we would ask on June 27th to cancel the July 11th board meeting and change it to one meeting in July on July 18. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, Peggy. Peggy says that is on for tonight.
Very good. We'll look at that agreement of alternative education services.
On June 27th, we would ask to approve our services agreement with the Delphi Education, and that's a yearly item that you folks vote on, in case we have to use that at any time during the year.
Any further citizen comments?
There are none.
I would entertain a motion to recess to personnel. I'm sorry. To the executive section, thank you, Darian. And the move is by Ms. Rhodes, the second by Mr. Beistel. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we will recess. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and we have reconvened to the voting meeting. Citizen comments?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. And we will move to new business, the main issue here tonight. Go ahead. Johnson Controls.
It is recommended that the board approve Southmoreland...
Wait a minute.
This might be a matter of order, but I, we went from a discussion meeting to now a voting meeting, we might want to do an official roll call again. It might seem silly, but...
No, no, no. Thank you so much. And I'm sorry, go ahead, the secretary, and call them all.
Mr. Alt? Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Dr. Fike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman? Mrs. Love? Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here, and there are seven, six present and three absent. Now, we will move to Johnson Controls and the...
It is recommended that the board approve Southmoreland School District as a jointure school with Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center to enter into a guaranteed energy savings contract with Johnson Controls, Inc. And the formal resolution will be entered as a part of the minutes.
Move by Ms. Rhodes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. Question, comment?
Will all of these materials then be attached to this motion, right, resolution?
The official resolution, yes. That will be attached to the minutes.
Any further comments? We've led this discussion session on it.
Is it going to be attached, I didn't get the answer?
Yes, I think the answer was yes.
Okay, because I have no problem voting for it, this is attached, that's all I'm saying.
Very good, roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six yes and three absent. Cancellation of the July 11th meeting.
It is recommended that the board approve the cancellation of the July 11, 2013 discussion meeting.
Mr. Beistel makes the motion.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six yes and three absent. And we move to personnel. Summer custodial help.
It is recommended that the board approve Lee Hankinson as additional summer custodial help.
Mr. Beistel makes the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rhodes. Roll call.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six, zero, and three absent. A resignation.
It is recommended that the board accept the resignation of Ralph J. Slate as school security effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Beistel makes the motion, and seconded by Mr. Benz. Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six, zero, and three absent. Substitute custodian.
It is recommended that the board approve Samantha Yutzi as a custodial day-to-day substitute.
Is there a motion? Mr. Polakowski makes the motion. Ms. Rhodes makes the second. Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six, zero, and three absent. And I believe our superintendent, assistant superintendent, Dr., there are two other walk-ons.
There are two, two walk-on motions. First, it is recommended that the board approve Lisa Williams as a two-and-a-half-hour cafeteria worker at the contracted rate.
Is there a motion? Mr. Polakowski. Second by Ms. Rhodes. I believe, is this where we need to...
Yes.
Okay, does the public have any, since this is a walk-on, the public have any comment or question? Hearing none, I'd ask for the roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six and zero and three absent.
Final walk-on, it is recommended that the board approve Steve Santia as assistant football coach at the supplemental salary rate.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Benz. Seconded by Mr. Beistel. Public comment or question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes six, zero, and three. Any additional comments, Dr. Scott?
No, sir. Oh, thank you. Just informational for the board, many of you have asked about the administrative move. Just want to let you know that it is occurring. Everyone, actually, some folks have moved out and are very happy in their, in their new digs, and, but everyone that has been at the administration building is in some state of packing. So Lynn has already opened up her new office, and Business Office is in the final stages of getting moved.
And the Arts Office.
Yeah, everything's going, going fine, and our, Mr. Mizwa and the custodial crew have really been helpful.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Think it'll turn out to be very positive.
Board members, any...
I'd like to make that motion.
Oh, you wanted to make a motion, Mr. Fike, go ahead.
In order to guarantee the promise that the board has made, I'd like to make a motion that we commit the amount of money for the early retirement incentive payments for the four teachers who have tendered their retirements for this year.
Is there a second? Hearing none, we will, any other comments, we will move on. And thank you very much, and the, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't have anything.
Thank you very much, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Beistel makes the motion, and Mr. Benz, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.